Everybody please rise for the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic which stands on our nation under God, indivisible, with everything and justice for all.
Call me in order, roll call.
Very much good.
Yes.
Frank?
Yes.
Mulder?
Yes.
Thank you.
Yes.
Goldman. Yep. The council backbone will be gone tonight.
Before we start, I want to thank everybody for being here. Police chief has a few things we're going to bring to the light of the public and the council. Chris?
Yeah, I got a... Just kind of want to let everybody know I'm doing a good job of these guys are doing. I have a couple of words for a couple of these guys that have been working with me. Christian, if you want to go up there.
Do you have your question?
Yeah, you can.
Penny was supposed to be here, but she might have forgotten.
So, Christian, this is the leadership award presented to Sergeant Christian Lysinger. It is with great honor to present this leadership award to Sergeant Christian Lysinger. Sergeant Lysinger has distinguished himself as a true leader within the Lakeview Police Department. From the time Sergeant Lysinger was hired, he continually looked for more responsibility and took on the role of department training officer and evidence custodian. Sergeant Lysinger has played a pivotal role in ensuring that all members of this department were up to date on critical annual service training. His determination to get this training done places the Lakeview Police Department within compliance with state laws and regulations. As the field training officer, Sergeant Lysinger ensures that the new recruit is educated, prepared, and competent in his duties and ready for the academy. Furthermore, Sergeant Lysinger was given an FTO plan and was able to develop and adapt that plan to ensure the department had accurate documentation for the new recruit's activities. His leadership gave the new recruit the skills and confidence needed, allowing him to be released on his own ahead of schedule. Sergeant Lysinger was given several administrative tasks, which include developing domestic abuse packets, death investigation packets, evidence logs, and procedures. Sergeant Lysinger developed a golf cart record that allowed the department to enter information into the new reporting system, allowing members of the department to track registrations while on patrol. Finally, there is no task that Sergeant Lysinger will not complete, as loyalty and dedication are critical to the success of this department. The Lakeview Police Department is fortunate to have such dependable, innovative, and dedicated professionals, and Sergeant Lysinger is deserving of recognition. Thank you, sir, I really appreciate it.
All right. Thank you. All right.
Assistant Chief Cody Brown. It is with great honor to present Assistant Chief Cody Brown this official commendation for exceptional service. Assistant Chief Brown has distinguished himself as an exemplary officer with the Lakeview Police Department. Specifically between April of 2022 and April of 2023, you have taken on the role of the Assistant Chief of Police and the department's primary investigator. During this time, you have conducted several investigations, completed over ten search warrants and filed over twenty-five charges on several suspects. The impact of these investigations directly affected the lives of victims, the people of Lakeview and Walllake, and the reception of this department. During this time, Assistant Chief Brown spearheaded a multi-jurisdictional operation involving members of the United States Postal Inspector and several members of the Iowa Division of Narcotics Enforcement. During this operation, two pounds of marijuana, a package containing several packages of THC vape cartridges, two firearms, drug paraphernalia, and over a thousand dollars in cash were seized. Furthermore, you arrested a suspect for possession of drug paraphernalia and public intoxication. While booking the suspect into the jail, Assistant Chief Brown located a large knife on the person and subsequently charged with possession of contraband or criminal facility. You conducted an investigation of sexual assault on a minor, the investigation which involved several jurisdictions resulting in the arrest of two male suspects. Suspects were subsequently charged with sexual abuse in second degree. You conducted an investigation on a juvenile for disseminating obscene material to other minors and communicating a terrorist threat. During the investigation, Assistant Chief Brown determined the suspect obtained a nude photo of another minor and forwarded that photo to others. Furthermore, Assistant Chief Brown learned the suspect had in their possession a necklace with several students' names. A search warrant was conducted on the suspect's phone where evidence was obtained, and the suspect was charged with these crimes. He completed and conducted a search warrant on a storage unit after receiving intelligence and information about possible drug activity involving the person and any of the unit. During the search warrant, several items were seized indicating that the suspect was in possession of drug paraphernalia and narcotics. You notified of a suspect who was observed exposing themselves in the school library. During the investigation, Assistant Chief Brown conducted an interview with the suspect which resulted in corroborating the statements of the victims. Due to this interview, evidence was obtained and the suspect was charged with indecent exposure. He investigated a call of vandalism and reference to fiber optic cables being cut. During the investigation, Assistant Chief Brown determined a suspect used a crowbar and pruning shears to cut the wires. The suspect was identified and most items were in their possession were seized as part of the investigation. The suspect was subsequently charged with criminal ownership in third degree. Furthermore, you have been a pillar within the community and a leader within the department. As a direct result of your actions, the cities of Walllake and Lakeview have become safer and more enjoyable for all members of the community. Your professionalism and dedication reflect highly not only on yourself, but also on the image and reputation of the Lakeview Police Department. I thank you, sir.
Can you give me some information on that?
Yeah, can I? I'll just print it off.
That's fine. It's fine. Thank you.
That's all I got. Thank you.
Good job, guys.
Thanks, everybody, for coming for that special event. Okay, public forum. Anybody here for public forum? Okay, we'll move on to consent agenda. Any additions or corrections? Second?
I'll second.
Roll call.
Goldman?
Yes.
Thank you.
Yes.
Mulder?
Yes.
Frank?
Yes.
Okay, we have the first building from Mint, 388 North State Road. Do you have any other minds? We need a motion to approve that.
We got all three.
Yeah, if the council wants to do all three, we have a motion to approve all four of them.
So who?
Second?
Second.
Roll call.
Goldman?
Yes.
Frank?
Yes.
Mulder?
Yes.
Thank you.
Yes.
Administrative report.
Yeah, sure. The one thing that is listed here deals with brush pile site, and I know that Mike wanted to talk about that a little bit, about concrete especially out there.
I feel that the concrete is overtaking our brush pile site, and I think we need to do something to curb the amount going in there. Or they need to be responsible for at least getting it pushed back over the hill.
And you're talking about Hancock?
Hancock.
Old Castle?
Old Castle.
Or whatever it is.
It shouldn't be the city's expense to be pushing it back for the amount that they are putting in there. And the other part of the brush pile site is that we need to keep it smaller piles and kept burnt down so that we don't have issues.
Any update on that, Dean, about what the discussion's been with Hancock?
I talked to them, and they said that they would... they'd help push it back. I had already talked to Navi to come at some point to push it because it's out of hand. We're getting into our busy season where people are going to want to dump concrete, and we can't. Navi's busy doing other jobs. He said he'd get there as soon as he could. The thing with the brush pile, we try to play the wind as best we can because there are people that complain about smoke. You know, if we burn it smaller piles, you know, light them all the time, the chances this summer, we're always going to have that south wind, and it's going to come right to that area. Reason why it was so big this last time was it was the winter time, and it was always wet, snow. I chose to burn it that day because it was out of the west, the wind. And I do understand what you said, you're saying maybe try to do the small piles, and we can do that, but it's the wind is the problem.
And I also talked about pushing it in while it is burning.
Uh-huh.
There's...
I get a little nervous because I put that back on that...
A lot of people push it into a pile with rubber tires, and it doesn't seem to bother, so I think we need to do it, keep it burning while it is lit.
Can we get a contract with Old Castle they'd sign so we have something to fall back on if they don't do what they're supposed to do? If they would sign it the first time anyway?
Well, years ago, it was just a verbal agreement between Wetsteins and the city, and they donated part of the land to the city if they could dump their stuff there. But at that time, that was more just washing out their cement truck and stuff, I think. And it is really, like I said, got out of hand, and I don't know if we can. And if we keep pushing it back, we're going to hinder the road that's supposed to be down below to help fight fires.
Yeah, we did another area back by the leaves. There is a little road that goes back there so you can get right behind the leaves with a quick attack instead of having to go over the concrete.
Is there any of that?
Yeah.
The way you file on concrete, if you're not going to access it from the audience.
We're hard on tires.
Yeah.
So, are we going to try and develop an agreement of some sort?
We need to. I've talked to God about it. It's just ridiculous. On the amount that they're putting out there, and I've had a discussion with them about, you know, the old verbal agreement, and I was too stern when I talked to the gal there.
You're banned now.
I was banned for being there.
So what if we came up with a written agreement?
We can do that. I will contact them and tell them that, you know, we're going to come up with some type of...
Dave, is there any special language we've got to have in that, you think, or...
Well, we'd have to look into what the prior agreement was. Is there something in writing that proves this, any of this?
I think it's... I've seen something in the minutes that basically said that the city accepted a piece of property, a portion of this dumped property from the... from Lakeview Concrete at the time, and in exchange, they were allowed to dump there. That had been two or three owners ago, and we've just continued to let this happen, and it hasn't, you know, really got out of hand, but there's a lot of stuff out there now.
I'd say it's out of hand.
And they used... years ago, they were pretty good every other time they do it, but they kind of fell through the cracks.
And I know that, you know, your people that cut down trees, they got a permit fee to dump up there, but the concrete people don't have a permit.
Right.
What does it cost the... of the time to push it back with those or...
Yeah, it depends. It's just hours, right, but it's been twelve hundred dollars before. Depends on how much is there... how much work's there to do.
Well, that'll be pretty good in the six.
Although Old Castle is supposed to get out there and push up all of that, those piles of dirt.
Well, there's the... Moore, Nate Moore was hired to all... do something and put all that dirt that was on that... where they cleaned out all the trees and everything, made that more parking and stuff. They brought all that dirt and stuff out there, and there it sits, and they were supposed to come and push it up, and I went there, and they even brought their payloader to the dump, and then as soon as I left, the payloader left. So, and nothing ever got done.
Did we haul that sand that they were going to give us?
Nope.
We should haul that before we get an agreement. They might renege on that.
We've got a barricade I'm getting for free, too, on Thursday. We're at the Mexican restaurant. They run over my electrical boxes for the fourth or fifth time.
They texted the other night. Nobody was out of power, so I didn't bother you. But I knew they hit your box.
Well, I about broke my neck this morning when I drove by.
I'll warn you next time.
That'd be great.
Mike, will that work for you? We'll get that done. Okay, we got some...
And you have... you have a couple of other things.
Okay.
For the administrative report. Shoreline cleanup is this Saturday, eight o'clock. So Mayor, we've gone on you to drive?
Yep.
NYU drive?
Yep. We're not picking up. We're just driving. We're highly skilled. Yeah.
Oh, is that... we'll have a couple of other city employees there, hopefully, to operate equipment then. But volunteers, eight o'clock, out at the open shelter house, will go clean up around the lake on Saturday morning.
Free lunch after that.
And then, yep, Hometown Pride Committee does lunch afterwards, so... So you're paid in... you're paid in... Okay, for the council, Western Iowa Advantage, our regional economic development, they have their annual dinner meeting, and that's on Wednesday night. Wednesday night at six o'clock. If anybody's able to go, I can still get you tickets, I think.
Where's this at?
Portobello?
That's the one I talked to you on. Who are you signing up? Two friends. They're not my sign up.
Yeah, I signed me and you, but who else? Who else can get signed up?
I'll go.
Right? Northwest Iowa League is Thursday, but it's cleared up in Esterville if anybody wants to go up to Esterville. And we have one open summer position yet as a utility folder, and Dave Putnam's shown some interest in being a utility folder would work for us part-time, two or three days a week. So he's coming in this evening, tomorrow, and if this is something that we can... if we can get started, we may get Dean hired and then formal exit then at the next time for you. We get somebody on board to help out with those public works and electric duties that we need those extra hands for and cleaning sewers and all that good stuff. That is it.
Do we have any concrete bids?
I hate to tell you that we did not get any concrete bids. Bruce has had looked at that, and we're going to bid that, and said they got another big flat job that was a lot less per than this, so they did not bid. I sent out twelve packets on them. I just didn't get any bids back. I will keep working, and, you know, Bruce has said, you know, if you don't get any bids, talk with them. They may be willing to do the work, but... And just knowing that their price was, you know, pushing forty thousand on that, on all of those ash jobs. So, no, he had no action there.
Is he going to do something with Magog, too?
No, you know, we're putting... you're putting your bridge out there, and that's going to... that's going to solve the bridge problem for a while.
That's it?
On that one.
Okay, first state bank, we're going to consider the site plan. It's been through proper channels?
Yes, it's been through the Planning and Zoning Commission. Their site plan begins on page thirteen, and then there's elevation drawings on fourteen, fifteen, and the drainage calculations that are on sixteen and seventeen. Art, any... anything, Kevin?
Just that we had a lot of engineers working on it, so hopefully it makes more sense to you guys than it does to the common person, but...
You're typically thirty percent off.
Put that in the minutes. So, yeah, basically, this is, I believe, the ninth bank that the Landis family has built. I mean, they don't skimp. I mean, Kevin can attest all the work that we put through to try to, you know, make it a nice-looking building, and like I said, it really... from what I can see, they didn't spare any expense. I mean, I want something to be proud of and something that the community likes to look at, and hopefully it works out good for everybody.
Do we need a motion to approve the site plan?
Motion to approve the site.
Don't make that motion. Somebody can slip the plan for a second.
Do you want to be a second?
Roll call.
Okay, Frank?
Yes.
Goldman?
Yes.
Thank you.
Yes.
Mulder?
Yes.
Make a motion to approve that with a permit application.
I'll second.
Roll call.
Goldman?
Yes.
Mulder?
Yes.
Frank?
Yes.
Danny?
Yes.
There you go. When are you going to start?
Tomorrow. Hopefully soon.
Reconstruction meeting on Wednesday, is that...
I've got some concrete work to get done first.
We got a place you can dump some old concrete.
Better hurry. It'll open within a couple of weeks.
Okay, we're going to get an update on the community center update, and then we'll talk about the green infrastructure.
Thank you, guys.
Yeah, see you.
Thank you.
Good evening. My name is Brad Buckner, and I'm here on behalf of Hometown Pride Committee, and my purpose is tonight to update the council on the community center project. As you know, the community center project was awarded two hundred and forty thousand dollars from the enhanced Iowa Board through its Community Attraction and Tourism Grant Program. With this latest grant, our fundraising campaign has reached eighty-seven and a half percent of its one million, six hundred and two thousand, eight hundred and fifteen-dollar goal. With that said, there's much work to be done. The CAT grant funds are contingent on us raising the remaining funds for their fundraising campaign within ninety days. That means we will have to raise two hundred thousand, one hundred... yeah, two hundred thousand, one hundred and three dollars in that timeframe. To address that matter, we have developed a fundraising plan which is based primarily on various grants and public outreach. We anticipate that the Iowa Great Places Program will be a major benefactor in this stage of fundraising, as they have indicated to us that they have additional funds available that were earmarked for projects in other parts of state that have since fallen out of the wayside. I just want to make a few remarks specific to the Great Places Program as well, too. There are many individuals, businesses, and groups that have contributed to this project's success and progress. Among the more outstanding partners in this project has been the Great Places Program. This program offers designated communities many benefits, such as networking opportunities and the use of their local marketing materials. In our fundraising efforts, this program has been crucial. It awarded two hundred and fifty thousand dollars in the early stages of this project. As anyone who has been involved in a fundraising campaign knows, those early commitments are crucial to get the ball rolling. Other grants supporting this project, such as the Rural Innovation Grant and CAT grant, also factor in Great Place Designation and the Storm River. Basically, that designation gives Lakeview an additional edge when applying for the state grant, state-funded grant programs. So altogether, these grant programs have awarded five hundred and ten thousand towards a community center project, when that would otherwise go somewhere else in Iowa. When Lakeview received its designation from Great Places in 2019, that designation was good for five years. Since then, the program has made a few changes, and now the designations may last ten years. I'm not sure on that. We have to reapply. Have to reapply next year. Good. So I encourage our city leaders to recognize and value the program and maintain our designation as a Great Place. In closing, I want to publicly express our group's appreciation to our Great Places Program and to the many advocates, supporters, and volunteers that have enabled the community center project to reach this point. Any questions?
Hey, Brett.
Thank you.
Especially Penny.
Yeah, I do want to talk through these two sets of plans, and they're easy... easiest to tell apart, I think. Just look at the upper left-hand corner. One of them has a red... some red verbiage up there that says letting date, letting date of April twenty-seventh, twenty-three, and the other one has no letting date upon that. Say the one with the red letting date on it, those are the plans for the retention pond. Okay, so those would be the plans. I really want to flip to the third page on that just to talk through the overview of what that... what that looks like. So if you're on the third page, it shows that area and shows the one large retention pond, and it basically runs the entire width of the property on the south property line. Okay, so as you visualize where this is, the south property line actually encroaches a little bit into the existing gravel of the gravel parking lot there at Caddo St. So really, this would just shape the entire area then to drain and drain down towards this retention basin. The retention basin itself then is about six feet, six feet deep, and we had a number about how it holds ninety-seven thousand cubic feet of water. But it's designed for a hundred year flood, based on what the design parameters are on this. So it's designed to handle floodwater, but the primary purpose of it, and why it's funded with the grant, is water quality before water goes to the basin. So that's... the intent here is that we could go ahead and proceed with the project. It would occur in two segments, okay? Because the one with the retention basin is a competitively bid project, okay? The one that is general site grading up there has some in-kind contributions. Then from two more, we rely on two then to be doing the general site grading. As far as timelines on this, the plans are largely done, and we could proceed with this. We need the approval of the grant funders from the Department of Agriculture before we go ahead and put this out to bid. So that's where we're at just right now, is waiting on that last approval, and otherwise the plans were ready to go.
It's in their hands, though?
It is. Yes, it is in their hands.
So is there an estimate time of when we might get an answer?
I do not know an estimate. Our engineers have been working with them then, too, to get that followed through and agreed to just as quickly as possible, because, you know, we do not anticipate any real significant changes out of this, and we'd be able to follow through and proceed to bid on the retention basin project. So the process would work that we'd get that final approval from the Department of Ag, and we know that we could send this out to bid, come back to the city council to establish when the bid letting date would be, and send it out to bid that way. Questions?
I, um... What I could gather out of this thing, it looked like it was eight feet deep instead of your six feet that you stated.
Okay.
And, you know, it's between the parking lot, two parking lots. Your proposed community center, your guests are going to walk from the community center around this mosquito-infested pond. I mean, I looked at a backhoe earlier this week, a week ago, and it was just a dried-up mud hole. That's what you're going to be looking at most of the time. Is that what our visitors want to look at?
It is vegetated, though, I mean, Mike. It will have... it has just a grass mix inside that.
Going over a backhoe, that's been there for a couple of years.
Yeah, that has native plantings and different types of plantings, and it's not seeded. But in the backhoeed one, it's intended to be a permanent wetland. This one is, too, that there would generally always be water in it. That's the concept of the water treatment, though, because being able to hold...
How is it going to filter the water that's being released from there into the lake? So that...
That just goes to a storm sewer. If it gets released from there, it goes to a storm sewer.
So straight in the lake, so it's basically not...
Yeah, it has to do with the amount of detention time that the water is in the kitchen.
So how is the water any different than it is now?
Well, that's what I'm asking. How is the water any different than it is now flowing in there?
Stops the overflow that's coming in from the field.
That hayfield...
Certainly have some knowledge of why the state is putting these in everywhere, to protect the water there?
That hayfield is going to filter more water runoff if there is any water runoff off that hayfield than what this retention pond will.
There's really... there's no action tonight.
No.
Scott, did you determine that's going to be about a foot ridge along the side of the hill there, so it...
It is very long Jimmy's side. At the north end, it had about a foot worth of a ridge, and then on the south... the south end, it was three or four feet. Is that what we discussed?
Right. Well, there's a hill down there now. When you guys put that first pond in there, and you didn't put a ridge on the hill, it didn't do anything because it all ran towards me and it all... but, you know...
Yeah, this does have a berm on running down that west property.
If you need the pond, that's one thing, but I've watched the rainwater come down that hill for the last fifteen years and cross the... and cross the road because there's no intakes down there. There's really not a lot of silt running down across that. I mean, if you watch it when it goes down, you know, if you've been out there before, I would think when it runs across the road, there's not a lot of dirt washing down across that, not near as much there is to the west of that field, north of Dixieland. Seems like a lot of overkill for a few acres. I mean, there's only, I know there's about, what, five acres to the highway and then some of that dirt, I mean, some of that farm ground across the road drains, but most of it runs to the west. Comes across the ditch at my place, down the ditch, and at that point, there's not much dirt running down through that, it's pretty clean water. I mean, it just seems like whatever it is, $300,000 to build a retention pond is kinda overkill for a little bit of drainage that it's gonna do.
I wouldn't think the DNR would approve it if it was.
They encourage this.
I'm just telling you what I watched for fifteen years.
I know, but I've just seen it.
It's a hay field and grass, and I'm not, I'm not fighting it, don't get me wrong in that, okay? I'm just telling you what I've seen, and if you was out there and watched it, it's clean water running down through a hay field and they put hay ground in waterways and farm fields to do the same thing.
And the DNR approved it.
Well, the problem is...
I get it, but that isn't accurate.
Right, but the problem is anytime you do a project like this, you have to use an engineer and that's the kind of plans that come up with it and the DNR gives the grant, I mean, it's just such a complicated...
Yeah, I get it, but what you're building is overkill.
There's major change to the building site then too, as far as the new building and then all of the parking lot that goes along with it. You know, so that's why it's designed, of course, for the post-construction.
Yeah. I think what Jimmy's trying to say is you're spending almost $300,000 on a $100,000 piece of ground.
But, a lot of it was paid for by the...
Fine.
Well, the thing is, is how, I don't think you can get the grants to do the work if you don't do what the engineer and the DNR have approved. I mean, there's just no way to say, well, hey, we don't wanna do that. I'm not saying you guys are wrong, I'm just saying how to get that.
We'll send it in and see what they say.
Yeah, we're just in a holding pattern right now, waiting for the...
Okay, we'll move on to the memorandum of agreement with the community club.
So that's on page twenty. That, you're beginning, last year we needed to have an agreement in place with the organizations that the city would fund. This is memorandum of agreement between the city and the community club that the city attorney had prepared for last year, same agreement that we would use for this year with the budgeted expense then for advertising being laid out then on the pages afterwards.
Scott, I have a question.
This would authorize the $15,000 payment?
Go ahead, Ricky.
So, I, I don't remember a memorandum before, so there must have been one?
Last year, last year's, first time, yes.
I never heard it discussed at community club, ever. And I just wonder if community club shouldn't have it.
It has been, Ricky, I know it has been. It has been.
I don't remember it.
Because Chris has, you know, we went through it and Chris assigned it, it has been.
It's not been brought up in...
It has not been brought up in...
We have had to discuss this before.
I get it, but...
When did we discuss this one?
When I asked Connie about the background information that she needed to give me.
I gave you the advertising information, what else is on there?
That's it.
Did we see it? Could we even see it?
Sure, so here it is, reached, it's about what the services are for.
What's it say?
Research and writing of applications for grants for community event projects, advertising in print, broadcasting on social media, maintaining a community presence on social media, compensation for contractors, paying contractors, which is, is, is going.
But, the grant part should not be on there. I do that because I like to do grants, that is not part of my job description. I don't want somebody that comes behind me that thinks they have to write grants.
Well, that was kinda my concern because I was on the committee when we hired, you know? We've gone through, I don't know, three or four. We had to split it because, you know, marketing and event planning kind of, it's hard to find someone that was good at both of those. So, I just wanna make sure that we're not into something that's gonna make it hard for us to hire because you have, you have the job description.
And the grants were never on there. I'm not saying I don't wanna write them, but I don't want them to be on there because then you're gonna have a heck of a time finding the next person.
We had to do this because the auditor, so...
Yeah, and we needed to say, I'm...
Well, I know, but it's the same.
We told, I didn't give any consideration to it this year, we used the last same one that we did last year.
But I didn't know anything about it last year, not a thing.
Anyway, I just...
Oh, it says we're gonna give you the money.
Thought maybe we could get a copy out of for the community club, because I've never seen it.
Yeah, I think that we should. I just, that's all I worry about, I think we're gonna fill it.
Well, we oughta just approve the agreement so we can move forward. Motion to approve.
Second.
Go call.
Bolton.
Yes.
Mulder.
Yes.
Spank him.
Yes.
Frank.
No.
Motion passes. Ordinance five twenty-five is pertaining to the Rad Bry.
Right.
We need to approve this ordinance.
Does the Rad Bry ordinance there, the Rad Bry here? There's a couple of things that are included in this ordinance and it primarily has to do with vendor fees. But the other, the other things I want to point out to you would be street closings. That this gives the police department authorizations for street closings, especially, without having, without having any... So I would tell you this is a boilerplate ordinance from the Rad Bry. And the biggest thing then is where the fees are.
Scott, how much of blind street here you keep going?
I think you're...
We're not blocking the first one.
That whole block, the line of bar, or is it all...
We're in the bar there.
Teaching or posing in the blind street.
So, I don't know, we even probably, we could give you an old version of the ordinance. The ordinance reads the same, but the vendor fees are $350 for any non-local vendor, it's $100 for a local vendor. So, that is any local organization defined by city limits. And, so if the local organization's within the city limits or has anything to do with the school, it would be local, okay? And then also if the, if it's a business who's expanding their scope of their services for the day, that they would pay a vendor fee and also this hundred dollars. Okay, so it's a hundred dollars local, $350 for anything non-local.
Do you want it city limits or do you want it Lakeview address? What happens if you have somebody just outside the city limits that wants to come in? They're part of our community.
If they're, if they're part of our community, then they get charged a hundred dollars.
Well, he was in the city...
The definition of his corporate limits, but...
I mean, take the Catholic church, for example. They're considered local because we have a lot of local people that go to that Catholic church, does that make sense?
Not so much. We should define it differently, if you want to have a different definition. Because the committee had met and just, had just, you know, kind of, it's almost like offhand, at least, had, well, we're just have local vendors and we would decide local to be city, to be city limits. And then these questions have come up like that. And then as it pulled out the old ordinance that we had used last time, it actually said school district. But otherwise we could look at something different. Or you just take no action tonight and have the committee look at it.
I just think it'd be a shame to penalize somebody just because they're not within our city limits. You know, Rustic River, for example, just, I mean, that just come up.
Sure, yeah.
Is like twenty-five, they have a good way to say school district?
Yeah.
But that's the Rad Bry, they use it more for school park?
Yeah.
Yeah, I mean, it's, you know, how do you define, you know, it's just really hard to define. You know, if you just do city corporate limits or, you know, I guess when we talked about it, it's just, it's just really hard to say if somebody from wall eight wants to come over, you know, that doesn't have any ties to the city. You know, maybe, maybe an outside vendor.
Couldn't you go by address?
Probably could, I guess, I don't know.
You wanna wait until they come with a better definition?
Well, I, they come up with their definition, but I just, I just hate to see somebody just outside the city limits penalized.
Right, absolutely. Because they'll need all the vendors they can get. If you wanna wait, we can wait or...
If you wanna, if you wanna wait one meeting, I might suggest that, but otherwise it has gotta get put in place. Things are happening here now.
Because we gotta get the vendors lined up pretty soon.
Because then, you know, another thing, they had a vendor meeting here last Thursday and there was, there was lots of issues raised about this, about this vendor fee. But Hannah is the one who oversees that committee and didn't really just stuck to that notion about corporate limits and that's the way it was implemented that night and, as everybody leaves, you know, they still might be frustrated, but they still understood where they were.
I think we should just go with the part that, one second. Did I miss that vendor meeting? You know, Hannah's in charge of the vendors, so it'd be her judgment, I guess.
So she'll make the decision when we apply to be a vendor?
But just the notion of this ordinance though, it is a real city law and it makes it enforceable. That, and that is the mechanism that's used to enforce it. So if somebody doesn't ever come get a permit, you know, they can, their vendor can be shut down or they can be required to get the permit then on the day. Really, the issue is the Iowa soil, that is the entire definition of it.
I'll make a motion that we approve the meeting.
Second?
Second.
Go call.
Bolton.
Yes.
Mulder.
Yes.
Frank.
Yes.
Thank you.
Yes.
I would encourage the council to wave, have a motion to waive the three readings tonight. Second?
I'll second it.
Go call.
Bolton.
Yes.
Spank him.
Yes.
Mulder.
Yes.
Frank.
Yes.
Okay, ordinance five twenty-six.
Just one more on that, it says last motion is to finally approve the ordinance.
Motion's in effect?
So rule.
Second? Go call.
Mulder.
Yes.
Spank him.
Yes.
Bolton. Frank.
Yes.
Okay. Have fun, Dave.
There you go.
Okay, ordinance five twenty-six. Pertain to non-conforming structures?
Pertaining to non-conforming structures, so that would be a structure that is pre-existing that does not meet certain regulations for zoning. Most oftentimes, this might be say that it's too close to the lot line and, or those type of issues that have made the structure itself non-conforming, okay? When you look at page twenty-seven, that entire paragraph in the middle of the ordinance is our existing code on non-conforming structures. Okay, there's one sentence underlined at the end that is proposed to be added to that. And just the intention there is to clarify. So, a sentence or two above that it states that non-conformity shall not be enlarged by any spending extended in such a way as to increase their non-conformity. So, I have implemented this to say that if there's a structure there and it's two feet off the property line, that if they wanted to expand the size of that structure so long as it never went any closer than two feet to the property line, they weren't, they weren't increasing the non-conformity, okay? The planning and zoning just very much disagrees with me and would say that if you had that structure and it's two feet from the property line and in order to add on to that structure, you had to jog in and then become four feet from the property line and be compliant in that regard. Okay, so, the planning and zoning has met their recommendation is this ordinance, but the change there is just clarifying, any addition to non-conforming structures must meet the requirements of the existing zoning code. It just takes out any of the gray area or question marks on that, just a better definition of it.
I make the motion to approve this new ordinance.
Second?
I'll second it.
Go call.
Frank.
Yes.
Spank him.
Yes.
Bolton. Mulder.
Yes.
You wanna wait or do you wanna wait till the council meeting or do the second reading?
Either way.
I'll make a motion to waive the second and third readings.
Go call.
Frank.
Yes.
Mulder.
Yes.
Spank him.
Yes.
Bolton. One more on that to finally approve?
So rule.
Second? Go call.
You had second, Mike?
Yeah.
Okay, Mulder.
Yes.
Frank.
Yes.
Bolton.
Yes.
Spank him.
Yes.
Okay. Resolution twenty-three twenty is spanning the branch to Lake and Stacy Eckerman.
Yeah, so the Eckermans do propose that they would like to reconstruct their home out there, the address is three seventy-one Lakewood Drive, but you'd know the location better, it being clear at the dead end. If you got Jean Hugert's clear at the dead end, this is the one that's adjacent to it. There's two variances for which they sought. One was the side variance, they would propose to construct a two-story house. If you look at the house on inch thirty, what the elevation show, okay? Two-story plus walkout basement of some regards. So, this is that they would like to have four-foot side yard setbacks where on a two-story structure, six foot is required. And then also has a rear yard setback which would be four feet or ten feet is required. This was presented to the board of adjustment and the board of adjustment has granted the variance. There's a resolution here that the council can approve. The council could approve the variance or choose to remand it back to the board of adjustment tonight.
Your motion to approve twenty-three twenty?
Just, the reason why I got reservations against it is because it's only four foot for safety concerns. You know, we got an ordinance in place, it's two-story, it should be six foot. And then the rear yard setback is only four foot, or it's supposed to be ten foot. And we also got an ordinance that says you gotta have two parking places, which was never brought up. You know, it's a congested area back there. I hate to stop anybody from building on their lot, I'm all for progress, but I just, I don't know. When Donna Schaefer built down here into Town Bay, you know, that was quite an issue, was the parking spaces.
I would tell you, the neighbor is Jean Hugert and she's a tickled pink that could do it.
We don't use it for parking now. Never have.
We made these exceptions before, I guess.
Then we just will throw away our ordinances.
Well, having an ordinance still gives you the opportunity to manage every situation. You know, I wish we could come in and say that they all should be the same, but this whole, all the way around the lake, there's been things that have been changed.
Just like the sidewalks. Yeah, exactly.
So, I mean, you can change your ordinance, but then you still need to be able to have the flexibility to make it work. And like you said, it's, it's good for the community, it helps, you know? So I don't have a problem with it and I'll make the motion to accept it.
Second?
I'll second.
Go call.
Spank him.
Yes.
Mulder.
Yes.
Frank.
Yes.
Bolton.
Yep.
Okay, we need a going permit, we need to prove that tonight also.
So they do have their going permit, ready dates that are made?
Second.
Go call.
Bolton.
Yep.
Mulder.
Yes.
Frank.
Yes.
Spank him.
Yes.
Sorry to make you wait through the whole council meeting.
That's fine, thank you.
It's a learning experience.
I'm sorry, I, I just...
I just...
What you're for. We understand.
Looks like it's going to be your own place.
We're looking forward to it.
Excited to move here.
Yeah.
Yeah, welcome.
We have openings on the community club if you'd like to join. We're there. Okay, resolution 2321?
Thank you. Thank you.
About 20 variants?
Yeah, it's variants for Shekingers. So, their proposal is that they would like to put a covered patio out front of their property. And really, as they presented this to the Board of Adjustment, look on page 38, I guess is the basis of their argument, that they would propose to have this covered patio go out as far as what the neighbor's home is. Then, you know, this is one of the instances where a front yard setback requirements are the averages of the properties. In this case, the property's to the power and include anything to the north. But as it went around the corner then, then it got caught up in the average and wouldn't have been allowed. So, this had been considered by the Board of Adjustment and the variants have been issued.
Should we approve?
Second.
Second.
Go call.
Bolton.
Yes.
Frank.
Yes.
Molder.
Yes.
Thank you.
Yes.
Very good. Resolution 2321 is regarding commercial boat docks.
We bet. This is 2320.
2322.
Yeah. So, the purpose of this resolution is to state that if we have some commercial co-docks that come off of residentially zoned properties, those commercial docks would be allowed to exist as they are in their current form. Okay? But the second part of that is just simply that the city of Lakeview would not permit nor will the city endorse a dock permit application through the DNR for additional docks used for commercial purposes which proceed from a residentially zoned property. So, this had to do with what we talked about at the last meeting about commercial docks on residential property. So...
Should we approve? Second?
Second.
Go call.
Molder.
Yes.
Frank.
Yes.
Bolton.
Yep.
Thank you.
Yes.
Okay, budget amendment.
Yeah. Budget amendment looks a little funky, actually, because there really is no significant budget amendment. Problem out of the amendment is actually negative. But it has to do with how things are accounted for through those state budget forms and through functional categories. You can't overspend on functional categories. So, you see some of them have increased expenditures in those certain areas, whereas other ones then would have negative. It's largely offset by that Lake Shore Drive project, which was pushed off into the next budget year then. So, I'd answer any questions, but the action for the council tonight would be to set May 15th as a public theory on a budget. Budget amendment.
I'll second it.
Go call.
Bolton.
Yes.
Thank you.
Yes.
Molder.
Yes.
Frank.
Yes.
Okay, we need a motion to go into closed session.
I'll make that motion.
Second.
Go call.
Frank.
Yes.
Molder.
Yes.
Thank you.
Yes.
And Bolton.
Yes.